We will call a meeting to order and have roll call, please.
Dyne.
President.
Walker.
Here.
Crispy.
Present.
May Cumber.
Here.
Wintering absent.
Agenda item one is to approve the agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as presented. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Walker.
Yes.
Crispy.
Yes.
May Cumber.
Yes.
Dyne.
Yes. Motion carried forward to zero. Agenda item two is welcome visitors and public comment. As we begin our agenda tonight, I'll explain our process for public comment. The board will hear comments from the public in conjunction with each agenda item using a structured process. As board president, I will ask for comments when we reach that item on the agenda. You will be asked to approach the microphone, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes. At this time, I invite any member of the audience to step up to the microphone with comments about items of interest or concern that do not appear on tonight's agenda. Please begin by stating your name and contact information. It would be appreciated if you would limit your comments to two minutes so that we can keep the meeting moving in a timely fashion and allow others an opportunity to speak, as well as allowing the board to complete the full board agenda in a timely manner. Comments from the public are limited to matters within the board's authority. Please understand that we, as a board, cannot discuss items not already on the agenda. Iowa's Sunshine Law prohibits us from having a discussion without the proper notice to all of the school district community that the issue would be discussed at tonight's board meeting. Also, please remember, you are making comments in a public meeting. Should you make comments that the subject of the comments considers to be inflammatory or libelous, you, as an individual, may be subject to legal action brought by the subject of your comments. Thank you for your support of our school district. Are there any comments from the public this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to agenda item three, comments by board members and superintendent. This is where Dr. Cox usually talks about things going on in the district. A few of those things have been prepared, and I'll read those. Charles City, along with three other school districts, New Hampton, Osage, Red Rockford, and Red Rockford, Marlboro Rock, have been awarded a grant to continue developing partnerships with area businesses. The Iowa Governor's STEM Advisory Council awarded a STEM Best Grant to these schools in the amount of $25,000. A regional consortium is being formed that will enhance student learning, providing students with authentic experiences, and really be a win-win for everyone involved. Students and businesses will partner to develop STEM-literate students who will engage in expanded opportunities with area STEM businesses. Teachers are already collaborating to make this program a reality. Last week, Donna Forsythe, a Charles City High School science teacher, and Trudy McCaig, a Charles City High School English teacher, along with Mike Keenan from New Hampton, immersed themselves as teachers in the Iowa Big Program in Cedar Rapids. Iowa Big stands for Big Ideas Group, and is one of the programs our teachers will be engaged with to replicate the success that they have seen for our students and business. We want to congratulate the Charles City High School Drama Department for their weekend performances of "The Miracle Worker." Around 40 students district-wide were involved in this production, and it was a moving performance. Winter sports practices are underway. We look forward to students continuing to be active outside of the classroom. Finally, Charles City has two students who qualified for the Iowa All-State Music Festival. Brendan Richards for instrumental music and Kaylee Michael for vocal music have achieved this honor. Only about 17 percent of students across the state who audition are selected for the All-State Ensemble. These students will assemble in Ames for two days of rehearsals and then perform at Hilton Coliseum on November 21st. This concert will also be broadcast on Iowa Public Television on Thanksgiving at 7:00 PM. Are there any other comments from board members?
I wanted to make a comment in regards to the play. Congratulations to a beautiful performance. The actors, it was totally, it was very enthralling. It was for some, a story that we all knew, and we all knew how the ending would result. It was, you were on the edge of your seat at times. Emotions ran high and low. They were, the performance was well above the level of a high school group, and it was great. Enjoyed attending the awards for the STEM grant. I was with Toss, that was exciting. I had never been in that plant before. And there was a very nice crowd, and it was, that was a wonderful event to be part of. And I'm glad to see we're hit the road in using those funds already for some exciting, exciting things.
Thank you. Have anything? Jim, you have anything?
No comments. Thank you. Good, I heard a lot of good comments about the play.
Yep.
Didn't go myself, but I heard a lot of good comments.
And I had the opportunity to go out to meet Toss for the STEM award announcements, as well as Robin. Was very pleased at the large crowd and turnout from local businesses, community members supporting the school district, and our work for the future. So, want to thank all of them for their support in turning out and assisting us with that. Agenda item four is the LED light fixture bid. We have received the bids, and it's in our packet. Jerry Mitchell is here, our Buildings and Grounds Director. He's also provided us with some paper handouts this evening. The low bid was from Sittler Supplies for $22 per unit to complete the LED lighting conversion Does anyone have any questions for Jerry? Jerry, I have a question. If you could come up to the mic, just for clarification, and I know part of it is in your packet that you provided, but we had originally bid out the 18 watt, correct?
Correct.
So, do we have any idea why anyone would have bid less watts?
No.
That cost more money?
Right offhand, I guess, Jerry and I never asked that question in the bid opening. So, no, we didn't.
But your material that you presented...
Tell us some things about the difference between an 18 watt and a 15 watt and a 12 and a half watt, correct?
Yes.
Yep.
And that the 18 watt is what was recommended in order to produce the same lumens as what we have now?
Correct. Yep. Where a 15 watt or 12 and a half watt will not put out quite as much light, could possibly, could possibly, in some areas, create where you might need another bulb, possibly. Maybe not, it all depends, but, so...
Okay, that was, when you see things come back and they don't bid what you asked for, it becomes a question of, in my mind, because this is not my area of expertise...
Sure.
Why did we bid what we bid then?
Yep.
But I think the information you provided explains that.
In a five-year warranty, what does that, what does that include in something like this? What kinds of...
Ball replacements.
Ball replacements, okay, so...
Correct. Because that's, for the bid that we suggested doing, it's, all there is, is the bulb.
Is that?
Correct.
Okay.
Is that a complete replacement, do you know?
I mean...
Mm-hmm, correct.
Just not appropriated.
Correct.
Because I understand that all these digital lights are, is that they got a string of digital diodes inside them, right?
I've got one right here, if you want to see it.
How many's in there? Yeah.
Did we...
It's all of the high school, all of Lincoln School, and also all of Washington School. Yep. We decided not to do this school at this time because with, with moving out, we couldn't guarantee that the fixtures would still be here after we were out of here. If someone remodeled, they'd take them out, so we decided it's best, best not to do this school.
I knew we talked about we didn't know how much of the high school we were gonna...
Yeah, we'll do the entire high school.
Do the entire high school.
When's the completion date?
Will be completed before December 31st.
And again, the bulk or all of this will be reimbursed through...
Through Mid-America rebate.
Rebates from Mid-America?
Correct. 75 percent will be paid on completion, and the other 25 percent will be paid once the rebate comes back.
Are you ready for a motion?
I think so. I think Jerry's done a good job explaining what the additional information he's given I've had a little bit of time to do a little research today.
Yeah, if...
My name is John with Perry Novak Electric here in town. The other bids you have are from us. Couple clarification things that I'd like the board to take into effect before you make this vote. This company that's coming around is having some issues in town. One of the things is, you're wiring these fixtures, you're taking the ballast out, putting the lamps in. The sockets aren't rated to have 120 volts to it. I have, I have a paper from one manufacturer that tells you that. I can give you a copy of it to see it. I did do, so the rebate is 70 percent of your project, not 100 percent. So, if their bid was, I think, roughly $185,000, you're still gonna have to come up with about $55,000 out of your pocket. It's 70 percent max. And again, I got a copy of the rebate form that will show you that 70 percent max that they can get back on rebate. The other side of it is, I did some research, and I had a lighting manufacturer do some research on this company. They're not DLC-approved. They have the DLC sticker on their product, but they're not listed on the DLC-approved website.
So, what does that mean?
Means, means that they haven't gone through the process to get their lights DLC-approved or Energy Star-rated in the commercial world. I have an email from it. You guys are welcome. My recommendation, you don't have to take my number, I'm not low, but do the research real quick before you get into this. I don't want you guys to get caught on the backside of something that's not right. This company's going around town promoting, basically installs with no cost. They're gonna get caught by Mid-America for doing that because it's supposed to be 70 You know, the other thing is, you and I work with Mid-America all the time. You can take this product and run it up Mid-America's chain and have them approve it before you do the project. Make sure they research the product and make sure it is approved. Then you know there won't be a question with the rebate. So, the worst-case scenario, if you're still cautious about this company, my recommendation would be a performance bond. Wouldn't cost you guys that much, and if something happens, you're covered. You asked about the 12-watt lamp. Technology's changed. It's changed drastically in the last couple of years. We can do a 15-watt lamp, we can do a 12-watt lamp. My intention was to get you equal or just maybe a shade less, but not, you won't know the difference to a trained, to a normal person, but you could save an additional $13,000 by going down in wattage per year of electrical savings to the school district. So, I've got these papers, you guys are welcome to have a copy. I'm not here to tell you to take my number. I'm here to please research before you make a decision tonight that could get you guys, and ultimately, it could get you in trouble because of what they do for you that they've done for other companies in town. Gets them in trouble. It could come back on the school district to get that money back, too. This is the one from the manufacturer that makes light fixtures. It says, don't wire the sockets hot. Visual call. company, not be able to find them on what's called a qualifying product list, and then their response coming back saying that, no, they're not approved. Again, the emails are in there, you're welcome to do the research, talk to these people just as well as I can. This is, this is one page of the rebate application. It's about five pages normally. This is where you will sign, and I highlighted where 70 percent is the maximum of any product that covers. That has a DLC sticker on it. I can find that online in 30 seconds.
What's the brand name of this product?
There's not, that's the problem. I bought one, too, from the person that got one.
We need to have you use the mic, though, because we're on TV.
That's been part of the problem, is it's, it's their own product. They're buying it, putting their label on it. That's why I'm saying it's not approved. If you go to DLC's website, Sittler does not have a approved vendor. So, just be careful, that's all I ask, before you get into it. Thank you.
Are you done?
I do have parts, if anybody wants my information, too.
Any questions or comments from board members?
Jerry, I will...
Yeah, Jerry, want to come back up to the mic, please?
There's a pretty good list here of businesses around the state that they've worked with. Any known concerns that you're aware of or been...
I contacted about three-quarter of them on the list, and there hasn't been any concerns from any of them, so...
Have you been in contact with Mid-America?
Have I directly? No, I have not directly. Nope.
And these companies, like the YMCA, they've been through the process, received their rebates, and then already no issues?
Correct, correct. I've met with Lance a couple times. In fact, that's where that light bulb came from, and the brand of that light bulb is on the last page of your packet.
That's what I...
Did they get 100 percent rebate?
Correct.
But why did?
From what their bid was to their rebate, correct. So, that I cannot, I can't answer that question on how that is. They gave us a couple of bids that we looked at and stuff, and there's things on there for labor and everything else, and it comes back, you know. More than happy, I guess, if you're not ready to make a commitment tonight. I know I'd be more than happy to get ahold of the owner of that company, and they'd be more than happy to come up here and talk, and they could answer any questions that you have.
Well, I just can't understand why the rebate form says that they're only gonna pay 70 percent, and then you're telling me, telling us that they, these people telling you they got 100 percent. Something's wrong someplace, you know? I think we should look into it, at least talk to Mid-America personally and get their opinion...
Sure.
Probably, before we actually act on anything tonight, I would think. And maybe talk to the company that's, you're representing, that we're...
I'm not representing any company.
No, I mean that they come with the lowest bid. I'm saying that you...
I'm not representing any company. I'm representing Charles City School District.
I didn't mean it that way.
So, that's who I represent. I'm looking out for the best interests of the school district...
But I just wonder if we should...
For best pricing and the, and the best product.
They're not here tonight.
Right, and nor did anyone need to be here tonight. So, we just took the bids, we took the bids, and we took the low bid, and I did my investigation on everything that I felt I needed to investigate, and that's what the proposal is, so...
I just...
We didn't ask them to come tonight to talk to you or anything, so...
Where did our bid specifications come from, then?
Terry and I put them together.
Based upon your research and talking to the other people in town who had worked on...
Correct.
I just got concerned about this contract, this rebate form.
Sure.
If it says 170 percent, we need to get contact with Mid-America and make sure one of us is understanding it right.
Sure, absolutely.
Because I don't think, I don't know where we can come up with 20 percent or 30 percent of the cost of this out of our budget at the present time. That's my concern.
I know it has to do with the labor cost.
Correct.
Is, is how it gets from 70 percent to 100 percent, but I wouldn't...
Right.
...venture to explain exactly, and I know that he's talked to, Sittler's has talked to Mid-America, but I haven't.
Yeah.
That's the way I understood it, not that I... Yeah, sorry.
Process has been approved. He, he got the process approved. It's worked for others, but...
Well, I guess, could, could we get the project completed if we wait until after next meeting, get more information compiled and make a...
I'd have to find that out, I guess, I'm not sure.
You're gonna be pushing your time...
Yeah, it'll be pushing it, because we have to have everything done, completed, paperwork filled out before December 31st for this round. Now, next year, there'll probably be some more rebates, but it's probably not gonna be as good as it is this year, so...
Plus, we're not doing it during the day when we have...
Nope.
Students or faculty in the building. It'll be nights and weekends.
Nights and weekends, yep.
So, you're limiting your time.
Correct. And a lot of the labor will be done with my staff pushing the scaffolding around, taking the bulbs out, things like that, so...
Collaborative effort.
Correct.
Just a quick review of the Better Business Bureau website. They have an A-plus rating. I mean, there are no complaints filed against them.
If they met the specs, they're the only one that bid what we asked for, I don't have a problem with proceeding.
Do, and there was, nothing within the bidding process to, like you said, if it comes down to the end that Mid-America withholding, we're short whatever we expect to get back? Or we're just on the hook for that, essentially? Is that what you would anticipate? Although we're withholding 25 percent of the...
We do anticipate energy savings, too, along with the rebate. This would be a general fund project.
So, the cash outlay will come from...
It's gonna come from general fund, and then the rebate will go back into general fund, along with any savings from energy.
Energy.
While they're here, I'm gonna ask the higher bidder, Perry Novak, they were the higher bidder. Were you figuring on changing, putting in ballast with each one of these lights?
No.
Well, there's the difference in cost right there, it's the ballast expense.
Plus, the labor was entirely covered by my company. I didn't have Jerry's rights on me, no. I thought it was an option.
What was the, I thought I had seen somewhere an estimated savings, annual savings, savings? Do you have?
I don't have it with me.
Probably in another meetings packet somewhere.
I see where the YMCA claims they saved...
Lance, I met with Lance today again, just finalized everything up with him. One month, comparing last, last year for the month of October to this year, the month of October, he's run the same hours, so it's the same electricity and all that, and I think it was 5,000 kilowatts is what they saved from last year in October to this year in October.
You're gonna see yearly savings of around $36,000, $38,000.
36, 38 or 36,000 kilowatts or a dollar?
Dollar.
Dollar, per year, per year.
Throw the gas away, we need to do this.
I mean, even if we, even if for some reason Perry Novak's bid payback year, year and a half, I think is what John and I talked about, even on that's a year, year and a half, so...
Any particular reasons general fund did not?
Well, for one thing, our PEPAL money is spoken for, and also because the general fund, general fund saving, it's a general fund saving, so if we did it all through the general fund, we'll get totally reimbursed there, because the rebate, the rebate would have to go to general fund.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
Ready for a motion?
Off the top of your head, do you know how much of a labor savings there would be?
I'm sorry, do what?
If you were aware that there would be a collaborative effort done with Jerry and his staff.
Probably about the difference. I had two guys figure, finally had to pay one guy to be here at night.
Table. To a table for a special meeting.
What particular question? Yeah, so you're most interested in the rebate stuff? Jim, getting that question answered?
I want to make sure we're gonna get them, you know, and I think, I think we need to check into it just a little deeper with Mid-America. And I guess after that, it could be, we wouldn't have to wait till the next meeting if we get some information.
I would like to have a special, I don't want to wait till the next meeting because it's too late.
Because it means we won't get it done, but I think we should check with Mid-America to make sure we're gonna get...
I actually think if we could have another meeting towards the end of the week, and do it that fast.
Or right before we leave next week?
Yes.
Monday night. When is Dr. Cox returning? Next Monday night? Monday night?
Yeah, Monday night.
Monday night, late?
Yeah, two, it's really... Yeah, two, it's really Tuesday by the time he be here for a meeting.
I should be able to come up with an answer by next Monday. Will we be able to then give Novak an opportunity to rebuild knowing that? Or we can't because that would go against procedure?
Yeah, we did seal bids.
We did seal bids based upon our specs.
Right. You know, and I guess either way, say Mid-America says seventy percent, although, um, with the labor savings, we're supposed to get a hundred percent of it back according to Sidlers. So, either way, whether you go with...
That's not what the contract says. Rebate contract here from Mid-America says.
I know.
We don't, I don't know if there's another one, though, on their website or that they have available.
It's their donated labor.
That's why we need to see them.
They're not, they're not charging a lot for labor. But the bid says include labor, include materials. But if they don't charge a lot for labor, it's in there. It's just that...
It's a minimal amount.
It's a minimal amount, right.
Well, there won't be a lot of labor if you're not going to put a new ballast back in here. For one thing, it takes labor to take the old one out and put the new one in. They're just going to bypass the old one. And maybe Mid-America, that, we don't know. We need to talk to Mid-America and find out if that's kosher with them, you know. I don't know where we come up with the spec sheets that we presented, you know. Mid-America should have given us the spec sheets on what we needed to, to qualify for all the discounts and everything else and whatever else.
But Jim, all of these companies have been through the process and gotten a hundred percent rebate as well.
Here they have, okay.
They have.
You sure?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, then we need to find out why we can't get a hundred percent. Why this contract says seventy. That's hoping, you know, you look at that. I think.
For, yeah, and I, I reasonably understood it when I looked at it and was it a Buildings and Grounds meeting we had that, yeah. I don't know that I could explain it, obviously, but...
Right.
If that, if, if they were able to provide a clearer explanation on that, that would maybe satisfy...
That would probably help because it's, it's not just Mid-America. There's other rebates there, too. So, yes, Mid-America may write when Terry says, Mid-America gives you the seventy percent, but then there's another percentage from another avenue.
Is it possible to potentially schedule a special meeting for labor later this week?
If you...
On Thursday, perhaps?
Sure.
You tell me.
Can we get answers in a couple of days?
I think so.
So that this can continue to move forward. I don't want to wait seven days.
Yeah, I don't want to wait till, I would rather not wait till next week either. I mean, we could, as far as I'm, Wednesday or Thursday, we just need, we just need a day to make some phone calls.
Well, let's give them, let's give them two days, business days to
And it won't take...
Find out what's going on. And do you want to do a morning, noon, afternoon?
Morning, please.
Morning?
What day were you saying?
Thursday.
Won't take fifteen minutes.
Oh. Hope not. This agenda item's taken more than that now. Not that it's not important to have the conversation, but...
It'd have to be after eight, yeah.
Thursday work for you?
After eight, I got to drop the kids off at school and daycare, but...
Yeah, I'm not necessarily thinking seven AM either.
Eight fifteen?
That's fine.
Thursday at eight fifteen.
Can I make a motion that we table this item of business till Thursday morning at, at a later date till we get more information from Mid-America?
This, this Thursday?
This Thursday.
I have a special...
This Thursday, a special meeting to approve this item.
There's been a motion made. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Any discussion or comments from the public? Roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. We will have a special board meeting at eight fifteen this Thursday morning with some answers to our questions, hopefully. Agenda item five is the Furniture, Fixer and Equipment Committee. As the packet says, there's a recommendation to form an ad hoc committee for furniture fixtures and equipment to make primary decisions for purchases for the new middle school. You have a list of ten, ten names that are being submitted for our consideration.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion that we accept these ten names as a committee to, what are they going to do? The furniture...
The furniture.
Furniture and fixture equipment.
Is there a second? Been moved and seconded to approve the appointment of the ten-member Furniture, Fixer and Equipment Ad Hoc Committee as proposed. Any discussion? Any comments or questions from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item six is the BLDD Professional Service Agreement. This is to add a twenty-five thousand dollar additional compensation to provide the furniture design services to assist the committee that we just appointed. You have the recommendation from the superintendent.
Any particular reason this comes up now?
Yeah, I don't understand where this come from.
We don't have to have their help. We could try to do it ourselves.
We could just buy our own, do all of our own's?
Yeah. But I, you know, that would be difficult and we, we don't really have the expertise, I guess.
For an entire school's worth of...
Right.
Stuff, yeah.
Seems like twenty, seems like twenty-five thousand dollars a lot of help for expertise.
Yeah.
Over, I mean, it's over the course from November through next July, this, this committee's going to be meeting. And they're going to prepare the bid documents and stuff.
I was just surprised to see it come up.
I would think we could get together with manufacturers and make some decisions on our own, especially after you get to kind of the convention.
That's a lot of...
Takes a lot of our, I don't know, time.
Then we're talking multiple manufacturers where we might be able to get one type of desk from one manufacturer.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
But it, it's for who, who's knowledgeable enough to know all the manufacturers and what they carry.
Okay. So, I figure our time's worth twenty-five thousand dollars.
And it is already included in the total budget. We just didn't have the actual agreement to pay them for this. It's included in the total budget that we've already approved. We just didn't have an agreement with BLDD to pay them to do this yet.
Right, right.
Motion to approve the Professional Services Agreement Amendment Number Two with BLDD Architects for twenty-five thousand dollars to provide furniture design services.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and approved, seconded to approve the Professional Services Agreement Amendment Two with BLDD Architects for twenty-five thousand dollars to provide furniture design services. Any further questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from the public? I think they did meet, they've already, we haven't approved them, but they started on the process last week.
One meeting, yeah.
They had one meeting to start the process, so. Roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item seven is the Middle School Edition Change Order. Uh, sounded like this was a change order that got missed or not put on previously. Uh, number ten, additional tree removal for McKenna's Excavating for five thousand four hundred and thirty dollars and twelve cents.
These trees been removed yet?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
They were all removed back in June, no?
No, there was just two more.
There's just a couple.
Oh, two more that they needed to? The Buildings and Grounds Committee had conversed about this at some point?
If they already did, we'd approve it. I'll make a motion to approve it.
Actually, not specifically. Scott just said that this one was missed.
Okay.
When we approved it the last time.
Oh, when we approved it at the previous meeting.
At the last meeting.
I'll make the motion we approve the middle school change order.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Middle School Edition Change Order Number Ten as presented. Any other conversation or questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item eight, School Budget Review Committee Application for Open Enrollment Out and LEP Instruction Beyond Five Years. If anyone has any questions, we'll ask Terry to try to explain them.
This is a application we put in every year. The School Budget Review Committee allows you to put in a request for this supplemental amount for students that are open enrolling out, that you're going to pay, that you didn't count last year. And then also for excess limited English proficient costs associated with that program.
Motion to approve the SBRC application authorizing the request for modified supplemental amount for the open enrollment out students not on the fall 2014 certified enrollment in the amount of sixty-three thousand six hundred and sixty dollars and for LEP instruction beyond five years in the amount of seven thousand one hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
I'll second it.
Agenda item number eight has been moved and seconded to approve as presented. Any further conversation, questions, comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item nine, Section 179D Allocation. As part of the Energy Policy Act of 2005, Congress had enacted the Section 179D of the Internal Revenue Code to encourage the design and construction of energy efficient properties. So, we need to approve this as part of the construction of the new middle school.
Motion to allocate the Section 179D deduction for the middle school addition to Estes Construction.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Agenda Item Nine as presented. Any questions or comments from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Walker?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item ten, Financial Report for October of 2015. Do you have any comments to make about this, Terry?
I was just going to make one comment. On the Capital Projects Fund Thirty-four, I, you'll now start to see the Series 2015 debt issuance. We're going to keep that, it's in three separate accounts and you'll be able to watch that amount as it's drawn down. We will be spending the 2013 amount first. But that is going to be something you'll see all year until we've got it spent. After the, there's thirteen million, thirteen point six million approximately in there now. After that's used, then we would use our cash payment at the end of the project to finish it. So, and we've already spent some of it. So, that's why it's not equalling your, your nineteen million.
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the financial report for October 2015.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the financial report for October of 2015. Any more, more comments or questions from the board? Any comments from the public? Hearing none, we'll have roll call vote, please.
Frisbee?
Yes.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item eleven is the Consent Agenda. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second it.
Moved and seconded to approve the Consent Agenda. Roll call vote, please.
May Cumber?
Yes.
Frisbee?
Yes.
Walker?
Yes.
Dyke?
Yes. Motion carried four to zero. Agenda item twelve, something new we have on the agenda is correspondence and miscellaneous. Says enrollment summary.
And that's, that's something that you've traditionally, we've just presented to you, but it's on the agenda as informational.
If I can get through all of the pages from the Consent Agenda. Any questions about the enrollment summary? Agenda item thirteen, Important Upcoming Dates. Well, we will add that we will have a special board meeting this Thursday morning at eight fifteen in the superintendent's office. Um, next Wednesday is the pre-conference in Des Moines. Thursday is the Iowa Association of School Board Convention in Des Moines, where we will be having a couple of presentations put on by our district. Uh, Monday, November twenty-third, we have a school board meeting. And then again, Monday, December fourteenth. And we only have one meeting, we have one regularly scheduled meeting in December, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Not to say that we might not have more than one meeting, but we have one scheduled regular meeting.
Right.
Right.
Okay. Having no other business to come before the board, we will adjourn at seven sixteen.